Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the business meetings for the city of Prattville this evening. We do have two public hearings tonight, and then we will move into our regular council agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll for us, please?
Counselor Sanders, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Chambers, Counselor Merrick, Counselor Whaley, Counselor Stritchett, Counselor Bean.
Having a quorum present, I do call this meeting to order, and I will read in public hearing item number one. Item number one is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have overgrown grass and weeds at 1456 South Memorial Drive, Lot A, 434 Water Street, and 1667 Buena Vista Boulevard abated, and to charge any incurred expenses for the abatement process pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Is there anyone present this evening that wishes to speak in favor of this resolution? Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak against this resolution? At this time, we will close this public hearing. Item number two is a public hearing ordinance, which is to rezone property located inside the corporate limits at County Road 4 East and Washington Ferry Road from B2 General Business to R3 Single Family Residential. Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak in favor of ordinance number two? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against ordinance number two? Hearing none, this public hearing is closed. At this time, we will invite you to stand for our pledge of allegiance and our invocation, which will be given tonight by Counselor Whaley.
The allegiance to the flag, and to the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we just come before you as humbly as we know how. Lord, knowing that, God, you're the provider of all. Lord, that you give us life. God, that you sustain life that we have, and we thank you for that. Father, we thank you for the beautiful weather we've had today. God, we thank you for the ways that you continue to bless us. We thank you for the rain that we've had and all of the new growth that we see that's because of that. Lord, we thank you that, just like you refresh and replenish your earth with that water, God, you refresh and replenish us with your living water. Fathers, we go into this meeting tonight. God, and we seek to do the things that are right. Father, we just pray that we have already sought your counsel before making decisions. God, we thank you for the wisdom and the guidance that you provide us so freely. Lord, we just pray that you continue to bless us, be with us here as we conduct this business, Lord, and then go with us as we leave here. And it's in Christ's name we pray these things. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Sanders, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Chambers, Counselor Merrick, Counselor Whaley, Counselor Stritchett, Counselor Bean.
Having a quorum present, I do call our meeting to order. The character trait of the month is tolerance, having an attitude of openness and respect for the differences that exist among people. At this time, we will have our approval of our minutes, including our public hearing and city council meeting, which were held on May the 20th, 2025. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And our minutes are approved. At this time, we will welcome comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. We do have two comment periods, and this first one is for things that we will be voting on tonight. So if you would like to speak concerning anything that we have on tonight's agenda, we would welcome you at this time to please line up along this sidewall, your right side, and to sign up at the podium. Please print your name and address for the city clerk, and you will have three minutes to address us. There is a secondary comment time towards the end of the meeting where you may address us concerning anything that is on your mind. Hearing none. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Good to see everyone again. Good evening, councilors. Recently during our storm, some of the rain that you just mentioned earlier, Councilman Whaley, you know, we fared it very well, and I think it was all because of the infrastructure projects we've been having, plus the proactiveness of our various departments getting out and making certain the drains were cleaned and the water's flowing as much as possible. But I want to thank the council to reach out to me about their districts. I know we still have a lot of work to do, and since we are the fountain city, we will continue to have challenges from time to time in a lot of these areas. But the good Lord did bless us, that he kept the river flowing and stopped the rain just in time. But also happy to report on our LRAP project update. LRAP is a lateral rehabilitation assistance program. We've had about forty of our senior citizens that have reached out to us, and so far this year, we've already spent roughly about seventy thousand of the budget, a hundred thousand dollars for this program. It's helped quite a few of our citizens around town, and pleased as you're out and about talking to your citizens, and if you happen to know anybody in your district, reach out to our Public Works Department, and they can actually help connect them with this. But the sewer line system, having it working properly, especially when you have a lot of the heavy rain, if they're not working properly, that overloads our wastewater plants and actually costs us all money, because that water has to be treated. Councilors, if you've heard me say many times before, I've had some good news and some bad news. Local paving should begin, weather permitting, June 16th. We ask everyone to be patient and cautious with crews in the various areas. Also, with your support of resolutions number three and five, we'll be entering to agreement for preliminary engineering for more paving for Sheila Boulevard and West Fourth Street. Resolution number seven will provide additional paved parking in downtown by Pratt Pool, which can also help service our Stanley-Jensen Stadium. On ordinance number two, on the regular agenda, is the final action required by council related to the 2025 debt issuance and reflects the final pricing of the bonds. The annual debt service for these bonds will be paid from portions of the infrastructure, public facilities, and parks recreation buckets with a one cent sales tax. On another note, ordinance number six is to enter into the lease agreement with the family support center for the building that the city owns next to City Hall. We've had this in place for many years, and it is up for renewal, just like what we do with the DHR building that the city owns as well. I think these types of partnerships are important for the services these entities provide to the community. Also like to give you just a short little update on some of our projects. Tera and McQueen Smith Traffic Light, if you have been in that area recently, you'll see utilities have been marked, and installation should begin in a few weeks. Again, some of that is still weather-related, and again, I just have to say, part of our progress, I know this was supposed to have been done sometime in April, and there's been some challenges here and there, but it is coming along very slowly. Fairview Avenue, the contractor is back on site today. Drainage works is continuing, and prep work for concrete curb and gutter will continue over the next several weeks. On our council chambers, it is progressing. They plan to have us back in the space in time for the election. That's a lot longer than what we anticipated, but hopefully they will be moving further ahead, and maybe I'll come back, and we'll be in there even earlier than that. Counselor, when it comes to the library, I spoke with the board chair, and he has informed me that they will be coming very soon to request funding for architectural services for a new library. I'd also like to say is don't forget the rescheduled Beats and Eats will be this Friday. Make sure you come out, enjoy live music and food. Food trucks galore, right over here on the corner of Fourth and Court Street. Madam President, into my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do any councilors have any comments or questions for the mayor at this time? Yes, sir. Mr. Whaley?
Just one. I've been asked this several times. There's a lot of progress next door. Do we kind of have a guess as to when that project should be wrapped up?
It appears to be on time, and so it should be toward the middle end of August.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will have reports from the council on special committees. Counselor Sanders, do you have a report?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Jackson?
I just want to go ahead and mention that we will have a street committee meeting tomorrow at 4:30 in the HR conference room.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Counselor Chambers?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Merrick?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Whaley?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Stritchett?
No, ma'am.
I also have an announcement of a committee meeting. The finance committee meeting will meet next week on June the 9th at 3:30 in the HR conference room at City Hall as well. Tonight, we do have the opportunity to create a consent agenda. Items that may fall on our consent agenda include the following. Resolution number one is to authorize the mayor to have overgrown grass and weeds at 1456 South Memorial Drive, Lot A, 434 Water Street, and 1667 Buena Vista Boulevard, abated and charge any incurred expenses for the abatement process pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution number two is to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 342 Sixth Street. Resolution number three is to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 636 Lower Kingston Road. Resolution number four is to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 797 Franklin Street. Resolution number five, to surplus self-contained breathing apparatus equipment, or SCBA, from the fire department. Resolution number six, to surplus a 1989 E1 fire engine from the fire department. Resolution number seven is to set a public hearing to declare the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at 181 Northington Road, Doster Street, 199 Cynthia Street, and 208 Magnolia Drive to be unsafe in a public nuisance and order their abatement pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution number eight is to declare the garbage and rubbish on Doster Street a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution number nine is to declare the garbage and rubbish at 208 Magnolia Drive a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution number 10 is to set a public hearing to grant a restaurant-retail liquor license to First Watch Restaurants Incorporated doing businesses First Watch 1159. Resolution number 11 is to amend Resolution Book 2025, page 108, to surplus various items of personal property from the city of Prattville. And Resolution number 12 is to appoint Robbie Anderson to the Prattville Solid Waste Disposal Authority. Do I hear a motion to create such a consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of creating this consent agenda, will you please signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, by a like sign. And the consent agenda is now before us. Do I hear a motion to adopt this consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding tonight's consent agenda? Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. I spoke with the property owner of 1667 Buena Vista. On May the 23rd, he sent pictures to myself and to the code enforcement showing where he's rectified the issue with his property. So I just wanted that to be known. I thought he was coming tonight, but he's not here.
Thank you so much. Usually, we just let the procedure fall through, and of course, when they get ready to go and see the property, it's been abated, then legally, they have done what they need to do, and we just go on with our business. Thank you for letting us know about that, and we appreciate the homeowner taking action and saving the city that. Thank you so much. Is there any further discussion regarding tonight's consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And our consent agenda is adopted, allowing us to now move forward with our regular agenda. Item number one is an ordinance. It is to rezone property located inside the corporate limits at County Road 4 East and Washington Ferry Road from B2 General Business to R3 Single Family Residential. Item number one was read in at the Massics Council meeting and addressed at tonight's public hearing, so it is now properly before us. Is there any discussion regarding ordinance number one? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number one, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And ordinance number one is adopted. Item number two is also an ordinance, and this is to authorize the issuance of fourteen million, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars general obligation warrant, Series 2025, for various city projects. Counselor Stritchett, will you introduce this ordinance by title only, please?
Yes, ma'am. To authorize issuance of fourteen million, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollar general obligation warrant, Series 2025, for the various city projects.
Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. By point of order, we must suspend the rules in order to vote on item two tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules at this time?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote to suspend the rules?
Counselor Sanders?
Yea.
Counselor Jackson?
Yea.
Counselor Chambers?
Yea.
Counselor Merrick?
Yea.
Counselor Whaley?
Yea.
Counselor Stritchett?
Yea.
The rules are now suspended, and ordinance number two is before us. Is there any discussion on ordinance number two?
Yes, ma'am. I have a question. I know, Mr. Mayor, you touched briefly on your report about this fourteen million dollars and the various projects. Is there more of a specific list of projects, since we go back to, I guess, what, February, do we discuss this? Is there a specific list of projects that we're approving this money for?
Yes, sir. There is a list. Let me see if I have it on.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Mr. Oakley is willing to come forward and address the issue as our finance director.
Sure. There's a, the list is the same as the, we've approved various pieces of this along the way. This is kind of final step. The list of projects include the City Hall annex renovations, the Vista Point Park improvements, the public safety training facility, a portion of the Stanley-Jensen Stadium renovations, and I should say, it was a portion of the public safety training facility, the Newton Park Phase Two renovations, the Spielway Park improvements, and Laney Drive extension.
Thank you, Mr. Oakley. And just for clarification, this is the final step in these bonds. This is not new debt that is being issued. We covered this beginning back in February. We started all of the steps, and this is just our final kind of putting a period at the end of the sentence.
Yes, that's correct. And we actually, you guys authorized me to seek financing options back in November. We passed a reimbursement resolution for some of these projects that have been ongoing back in August of '24, and then you guys had the, authorized us to go, and Stiefel, the underwriters, to go seek pricing and sell the bonds back in February. And now we've sold the bonds, we've priced them, and we have the final numbers.
Thank you so much. Is there further discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel, so much for that explanation. So to kind of simplify things for the crowd, the best way I can, this is an oversimplified version, but the very best way I can describe it is, just like an individual, our city has credit, and we have credit ratings, just like you would have a credit rating. And so very much like when my children are in their twenties, and we're teaching them how to build their credit, and that you, if you finance a car, making your payments on time and doing all of these steps are how you build positive credit. And very much, this is what the city is doing through our borrowing. We have actually raised our credit level, and at this time of borrowing, because we have been reliable users of our money, we have gone up in credit rating, and this particular bond that we are seeking, our credit rating is even higher because of our positive financial status in the city. So this is actually a positive thing, and just wanted to kind of, that is an oversimplification, but it's very much that what we do on the corporate level is very much what you do at your home level and what I do at my home level. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of ordinance number two, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And ordinance number two is adopted. Item number three is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a preliminary engineering and construction agreement with the state of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation, ALDOT, project number STPMN-0125, CPMS reference number 100080312 and 100080315, for the resurfacing and planing on Sheila Boulevard from East Main Street to Service Road 14, or US 31 North Memorial Drive, at a total cost not to exceed one million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars at a net cost to the city only two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes. Whereas a need has been identified for resurfacing and planning on Sheila Boulevard from East Main Street to State Route 14, US 31 North Memorial Drive, and whereas the city and state desire to enter into a preliminary engineering and construction agreement for ALDOT, project number STPMN-0125, CPMS reference number 100080312 and 100080315, for said project at a total cost not to exceed one million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, net cost to the city not to exceed two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Whereas said expenses are budgeted in the capital projects fund, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into said agreement with ALDOT for preliminary engineering and construction services for said projects, and funds in the amount not to exceed one million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, net costs to the city not to exceed two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars, are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 budget line item capital projects fund, Old Ridge Road paving. Be it further resolved that said agreement be executed in the name of the city by the mayor for and on its behalf, and that it be attested by the city clerk, and official seal of the city be affixed thereto. Be it further resolved that upon completion of the execution of said agreement by all parties, that a copy of said agreement be kept on file by the city clerk. So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number three? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number three, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And resolution number three is adopted. Resolution number four is to authorize the release of funds for the purchase of one 2024 Ford F-150 truck through state contract number MA22000003129 from Long Lewis of the River Region Incorporated for the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. Counselor Stritchett, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes. Whereas a need has been identified to purchase one 2024 Ford 150 Super Cab four-by-two truck, and whereas said truck is available through state contract MA220000003129 from Long Lewis of the River Region at a cost not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, and whereas this is a budgeted expense in Parks and Recreation Department, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds in the amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars for the purchase of said truck are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Long Lewis for the River Region Incorporated, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal 2025 budget line item Parks and Recreation Capital Outlay. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number four? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number four, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. Resolution number four is adopted. Resolution number five is to authorize the mayor to enter into a preliminary engineering and construction agreement with the state of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation, ALDOT, project number STPMN-0125, CPMS reference number 100080310 and 1000080313, for the resurfacing and traffic striping on West Fourth Street from Gin Shop Hill Road to Service Road 6, or US 82, at a total cost not to exceed six hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and five dollars. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas a need has been identified for resurfacing and traffic striping on West Fourth Street from Gin Shop Hill Road to State Route 6, US 82, and whereas the city and state desire to enter into a preliminary engineering and construction agreement for ALDOT, project number STPMN-0125, CPMS reference number 100080310 and 100080313, for said project at a total cost not to exceed six hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and five dollars, net cost to the city not to exceed one hundred and thirty-four, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars, and whereas said expenses are budgeted in the capital projects fund, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into said agreement with ALDOT for preliminary engineering and construction services for said project, and funds in the amount not to exceed six hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and five dollars, not net cost to the city not to exceed one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars, are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 budget line item capital projects fund, Old Ridge Road paving. Be it further resolved that said agreement be executed in the name of the city by the mayor for and on behalf, for and on its behalf, and that it be attested by the city clerk, and official seal of the city be affixed thereto. Be it further resolved that upon completion of the execution of said agreement by all parties, that a copy of such agreement be kept on file by the city clerk. So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on resolution number five? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number five, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. Resolution number five is adopted. Item number six is an ordinance to ratify, affirm, and authorize the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Otoga County Family Support Center. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this ordinance for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Section 114721 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, authorizes the city to lease unneeded real property, and whereas the city of Prattville entered into a lease agreement with the Otoga County Family Support Center for use of the city building located at 113 West Main Street on January 1st, 2022, and whereas said lease expired on December 31st, 2024, and whereas the city of Prattville desires to enter into a new lease agreement with the Otoga County Family Support Center, and whereas the costs of said new lease shall be in the amount of one dollar per year, now therefore be it ordained that the city council of the city of Prattville does hereby ratify, affirm, and authorize the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Otoga County Family Support Center, and said agreement will be for a period of three years, beginning on January 1st, 2025, and expiring on December 31st, 2027. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. By point of order, we must suspend the rules to vote on item number six tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
ALDOT, project number STPMN-0125, CPMS reference number 100080310 and 100080313 for said project, at a total cost not to exceed $671,405, net cost to the city not to exceed $134,281, and whereas said expenses are budgeted in the Capital Projects Fund, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into said agreement with ALDOT for preliminary engineering and construction services for said project and funds in the amount not to exceed $671,405, not net cost to the city not to exceed $134,281, are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 Budget Line Item Capital Projects Fund, Old Ridge Road paving. Be it further resolved that said agreement be executed in the name of the city by the mayor for and on behalf, for and on its behalf, and that it be attested by the city clerk and the official seal of the city be affixed thereto. Be it further resolved that upon completion of the execution of said agreement by all parties, that a copy of such agreement be kept on file by the city clerk. So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on resolution number five? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number five, please signify by raising your right hand? All opposed by a like sign? Resolution number five is adopted. Item number six is an ordinance to ratify a firm and authorize the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Otoga County Family Support Center. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this ordinance for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Section 114721 Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, authorizes the city to lease unneeded real property, and whereas the City of Prattville entered into a lease agreement with the Otoga County Family Support Center for use of the city building located at 113 West Main Street on January 1st, 2022, and whereas said lease expired on December 31st, 2024, and whereas the City of Prattville desires to enter into a new lease agreement with the Otoga County Family Support Center, and whereas the cost of said new lease shall be in the amount of $1 per year, now therefore be it ordained that the City Council of the City of Prattville has, does hereby ratify a firm and authorize the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Otoga County Family Support Center, and said agreement will be for a period of three years, beginning on January 1st, 2025, and expiring on December 31st, 2027. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. By point of order, we must suspend the rules to vote on item number six tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote to suspend the rules? Counselor Sanders?
Yea.
Counselor Jackson?
Yea.
Counselor Chambers?
Yea.
Counselor Merrick?
Yea.
Counselor Whaley?
Yea.
Counselor Stritchick?
Yea.
The rules are now suspended and ordinance number six is properly before us. Is there any discussion regarding ordinance number six? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number six, please signify by raising your right hand? All opposed by a like sign? Ordinance number six is adopted. Item number seven is a resolution to authorize the release of funds for the Prattpool Parking Lot Project to Alexander Seal Coating and Striping Incorporated, at a cost not to exceed $90,535. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas a need has been identified for parking lot improvements at Prattpool, and whereas Alexander Seal Coating and Striping Incorporated has expertise to complete said project at a cost not to exceed $90,535, and whereas pursuant to Section 3921 Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, said project is a public works project, and whereas Section 3922 Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, allows contracts for public works projects under $100,000 to be let without bidding, and whereas this is a budgeted expense in the capital, in the gas tax fund, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount not to exceed $90,535, are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Alexander Seal Coating and Striping Incorporated for said project, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 Budget Line Item Gas Tax Fund Pool and Library Paving. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number seven? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number seven, please signify by raising your right hand? All opposed by a like sign? Resolution number seven is adopted. Resolution number eight is to authorize the release of funds for the purchase of one 2025 Ford Maverick Truck through state contract number MA22000003128-6 from Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated for the cultural arts, at a cost not to exceed $27,965. Counselor Stritchick, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes. Whereas a need been identified to purchase one 2025 Ford Maverick XL Crew Cab AWD Truck, and whereas said truck is available through state contract number MA22000003128-6 from Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated, at a cost not to exceed $27,965, and whereas this is a budgeted expense in cultural arts, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed $27,965 for the purchase of said truck, are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal 2025 Budget Line Item Cultural Arts Capital Outlay. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second on resolution number eight?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number eight? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand? All opposed by a like sign? And resolution number eight is adopted. Resolution number nine is to authorize the release of funds for the purchase of one 2025 Ford Maverick Truck through state contract number MA22000003128-6 from Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated for the Information Technology Department, at a cost not to exceed $26,828. Counselor Merrick, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas a need has been identified to purchase one 2025 Ford Maverick XL Crew Cab Hybrid Truck, and whereas said truck is available through state contract number MA22000003128-6 from Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated, at a cost not to exceed $26,828, and whereas this is a budgeted expense in the Information Technology Department, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount not to exceed $28,828 for the purchase of said truck, are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 Budget Line Item Information Technology Capital Outlay. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number nine? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number nine, please signify by raising your right hand? All opposed by a like sign? And resolution number nine is adopted. This concludes the items on tonight's agenda. At this time, the council will welcome comments from persons present. Anyone who would like to speak this evening, we ask that you please line up along this right side partition, that you sign printing your name for the city clerk, and you will have three minutes to address the council. Anyone wishing to speak at this time? Hearing none. We will move into our closing. Oh, I'm so sorry.
You know you gotta move fast with somebody like me.
I'm a real senior citizen for a little while.
I qualify for cheap coffee at McDonald's, does that count? Am I a senior citizen? I'm getting there.
You do qualify for senior discount at Taco Bell.
Taco Bell, okay. I'm learning all these places we can go.
When you're 50, you're going to Taco Bell. I got called down and I said, hey, you're over 50, aren't you?
And Madam President, if I might, I have a point of privilege here.
Yes, sir.
I just want to let Ms. Barbara know that I do not have any black, white, or gold tennis shoes or sneakers, so, but I do plan on being there Saturday.
If you got some sneaker with some holes in them, come on in.
Will boots do?
We gonna do that for the reunion, so you can wear your boots on the ground then, that's Saturday.
Do I have to stay out in the parking lot then if I don't have on tennis shoes?
I'll probably let you in.
Please do state your name and address. We know who you are, but for the record.
Good afternoon. Barbara Robinson, 123 White Oak Court, Prattville, Alabama. I'm here to speak on two things and hopefully I can get it all done with. First of all, I want to say that I'm looking for every last one of you, because I think you all should have gotten my invitation for my senior citizen program Saturday at 4 o'clock. It's a black and white gold sneaker ball, but you can wear any color sneakers you want. Just come. Also, I would like to know, since we are able to use the park for our reunion in July, since everything's been canceled for, table for right now sake, I would like to know, is there any way that we can get our historical marker put up? Because from my understanding, I think that has been approved probably over a year ago or more, that we supposed to have a historical marker, if we can get it up, so when the people come for the school reunion, they can feel proud of the park from the school that they graduated from.
I'm going to allow Mr. Mayor to address that. I don't have any information on that, but I believe he might.
I'll, no promises, but we'll do every, give it a full college effort to get them up, to get it up.
I would appreciate it so much, and so I'm looking forward for everyone and bring your parents or aunties, uncles, cousins, neighbors, whoever, if you feel like you ain't a senior citizen, bring somebody and feel right along with them. I'm not going to shut the door on you and I'll let you come in barefoot.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there anyone further who wishes to speak this evening? Okay, we will move into our closing comments for the evening. Counselor Sanders. Oh, Mr. Mayor, are you trying to jump ship here? Are you trying to jump in front of number one? Is there a number in front of one? Go ahead. I will give you a point of privilege.
No, I thought it was normal for me to start first, but anyway.
It is. I'm absolutely covering up your name with my finger here. I'm so sorry. I'm out of order. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
It's all good, because I really don't have anything to say, except for recognize our former county commissioner right over here in the second row. Good to see you, Mr. Lee Maxtedt Meyer. Glad that you're here. And that's it, Madam President.
Tommy said it was my senior citizen stuff, kicking hands. Bad night. All right, now, Mr. Sanders, you have the floor.
No ma'am.
All right. Counselor Jackson?
No.
Counselor Chambers?
No ma'am.
Counselor Merrick?
No ma'am.
Counselor Whaley?
No ma'am.
Counselor Stritchick?
No ma'am.
Okay, our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, June the 17th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nays.